It's 10 o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber? It's 12 minutes after 10 and we have Mr. Burnson, Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Padilla. We have six members present, Mr. Fuer. Mr. Fuer, that makes seven members. We need three for a quorum. This is Chick, Mr. Holden, Ms. Mr. Kousky, Kousky's up. Mr. Varnich, Mr. Wax. Mr. Wax, Mr. Holden. Okay, call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fuer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kousky, Pacheco, Padilla, Riley Thomas, Varnich, Wax, Walters, Farro, 10 members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
The council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 29th day, Leap Day, February of the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, who are also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of amendments.
All right, Mr. Hernandez moves, Mr. Burnson second. There's no objection, unanimous vote.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Item number eight on the regular agenda, request that this matter be continued until March 1st.
Is there any objections to continuing until March 1st, which is one day? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Item number nine, a request that this matter be continued until March 7th.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 15, a request from the council office and the department to receive and file this matter.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item 26, a closed session item, request that this matter also be continued one day until March 1st.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Items number one and two on the regular agenda are items for which are noted for public hearing. I understand that Council District 14 wants to hold item number one on the desk.
Item 14, we're going to hold on the desk?
Item number one.
Item number one. Okay, we'll call that special. Is there any, we don't have any cards on it. Mr. Fuer?
Yes, with regard to item number two, Mr. President, which is in my district, the Department of Building and Safety has recommended the following, which I offer as an amendment, that we accept as payment in full the sum of $2,670.08 and waive the sum of $1,068.03. I'll make that motion.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. You heard the motion, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And that is approved. Next item.
Items number three through seven on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings are held.
Okay, we...
I understand Mr. Fuer's going to excuse himself.
Three is special.
Mr. President. At the request of the redevelopment agency, we'd like to continue items six and seven one week, please, they're in my district.
Is there any objections to continuing those items one week? Seeing none, that will be the order.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to call item number four special.
Number four special. All we have is a lonely five. No one loves five.
We can do that if you want, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden took care of it. So, that eliminates all those. Next item.
Let's continue the rest of the agenda, Mr. President.
Next item.
Items number 10 through 25 on the regular agenda are except for item 15.
Okay, item 10 is an ordinance, we'll call that special because I think we might, there's a possibility we have 12. Item 11, we have a card. Item, it's also an ordinance. Item 13 is an ordinance, we'll call that special. So, we have 13, 14. We have a card on 16. 17 is an ordinance, we'll call that special. It's Mr. Shapiro, so you figure it out. 18, 19, 20. 21 is a card by Mr. Shapiro. 23, 22, 23, 24, and 25. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items other than Shapiro? Seeing none, the public hearings closed on all those except the ones I called. Any special by council members? Sergeant, would you make sure that Mr. Shapiro is not raboising the audience? We'll have quiet in the audience. Do not disturb the, Mr. Shapiro, do not disturb the council members. Okay, all right, prepare the roll on 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 20.
Mr. President, Ms. Goldberg beat me on that.
Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Goldberg move fourth with on 20. Okay. Next item.
Item number 27 on the continuation of agenda is an item for which a public hearing has been held. There is also an amended motion, 27A.
Mr. President, I move 27A.
27A? Any discussion on that? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 28 on the continuation agenda is an item for which a public hearing has not been held.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on 28? Seeing none, have no cards, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this? We need a motion on this. Mr. Holden moves. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Called special is item number three.
Okay, let's move to item four. Mr. Hernandez, you call four special? Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, this is something that went through the Housing Community Development Committee on Friday, and it never went through the Transportation Committee, and it's talking about a downtown parking management plan. What I wanted to have an understanding is because some of the monies that are being transferred to comply, one of the projects that was terminated indirectly is the East-West Olympic Boulevard linkage plan. And I wanted someone to report to us on what is basically happening and what's the urgency that this be moved today. Are you staff?
I am staff.
Get the sit up here. Are you DOT staff? Redevelopment Agency staff, okay.
Council members, good morning. My name is Jeff Carpenter. I'm with the staff of the Community Redevelopment Agency. With regard to the project that was mentioned, the East-West Olympic Boulevard Connector, this was a project that we had gotten a small C grant on in the prior call, not the current call, MTA call. Since we got that grant award, the Community Redevelopment Agency has found itself unable to proceed because it lacked the senior engineering staff. We have worked with other city agencies, notably the Bureau of Engineering, for the past two years to see if there wasn't another city agency or department that could assume responsibility for this project. The Bureau of Engineering has told us unfortunately, though they worked with us very diligently, they were unable to find the staff for this project. It's a very important project, it's in the CIP, but unfortunately, we were unable to proceed with the grant award work scope at this time.
Okay, what's the urgency for us to pass this today?
There is a deadline of today to execute the grant agreement for the four MTA projects that are for you that were referred by H and CR. This is because they're obligated technically in the current fiscal year, so MTA has a schedule of asking the proponents to move forward with their grant agreements by today.
And this is for CRA to work on a parking management plan?
Yes. The Community Redevelopment Agency since the mid-'80s has had in force the peripheral parking policy, which has operated under a variance procedure with the city planning department.
Yeah, members of the council, and again, if I could just get a little bit of people's attention to this issue, because as I read the report, we have CRA working on a parking management plan for downtown Los Angeles, east downtown. Now, we have DOT working on a parking management plan for Staples Center, for the convention center, and basically it's created a big mess. But I'm also hearing from CRA, for example, on the East-West Olympic Boulevard linkage plan, that they didn't have staff, engineers, to do their work. And so now they're proposing transfer that kind of money into this project. I would think that parking management is best in the hands of our Department of Transportation, and that they have engineers and they have staff people who do this kind of work. But it's CRA who's basically coordinating this and trying to get the grant so that they can do the work. Now, it doesn't mix. It doesn't make sense. And so, I don't have a problem with proceeding today for the call for projects, but I'm really questioning whether CRA should be the lead agency on this. And normally, our call for projects go for, projects with MTA go through our DOT, our Department of Transportation.
That is the case with this as well. And in fact, we're talking actually about a zoning ordinance, so we work very closely with both the city planning department and the Department of Transportation. They're very close, integral partners on this project. The redevelopment agency, because it took the initiative with its peripheral parking policy, which was directed at long-term commuter parking, new office development in the financial core, is in fact sort of first in position to move that forward. And that's exactly what we're trying to do, is get ourselves out of the lead position into a more stable process where the city will take this over rather than having agency in the lead position, as we presently are with the peripheral parking ordinance.
Okay, so right now, when you, and I guess I'll drop this after this, but my understanding is when it comes back to us, it's going to go through the Transportation Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, it should be. We would have brought this through both committees had there not been exigencies on this time deadline we're against.
Right, okay, so that is going to be one of the instructions. And I also would like included in the instruction, basically a review by our Department of Transportation, a presentation of our Department of Transportation, as what's the best way to deal with a parking management plan in this area. Okay, that's my amendment to the report.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard on this? So we have item four before us? Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Yeah, excuse, excuse Mr. Fuer. Yeah, excuse, excuse, Mr. Fuhrer. We have item number three before us now. Is there any discussion on three? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that one. Next item. Item number five, I think, is Mr... What is your name again? Holden?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. There's no report. I was, I want to see the report unless somebody can tell me what we're talking about here on item five. It says that for rehabilitation of the Lancashire South Pacific Railroad Station and construction of intermodal amenities, North Hollywood redevelopment project area, but there's no report. Maybe just hold it on the table until we get a report or hold it till tomorrow until we get a report? Well, let's hold it until we get a report.
John, excuse, Mr. President. We can't hold it until tomorrow because it needs to be signed today to save the money. But the money won't be spent until it comes back to the council and CED for approval. But they need, today's a deadline for at least holding the money that's already been allocated for.
Is there a report on this, Mr. Wax?
No. Well, the CRA staff should be here.
Well, just call them over.
But we can't delay it beyond today because it has to be signed.
Yeah, we're still in session. So, why don't we just hold this on the table until they show up?
Well, we will, we'll give you a little time, Mr. Holden, but you only have two minutes left on your time. Okay. Next item.
Mr. President, item number one. Council requested this matter be continued from 7.
Is there any objections to continuing one until March 7? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Mr. President, there are 12 members now present. Did you wish to consider the ordinances?
Yes.
Items number 10 and 12 are currently before you.
And 17.
And 17. There is a speaker card on item number 11, yes.
Okay. Prepare the roll on 10, 12, and 17. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's get, I know we all want to hear this stirring speech on 11 by Mr. Shapiro.
Good morning, Mr. President. I see you're back on a job again, good and feisty.
That's right.
Ready to give more hell, especially me?
You bring that out in me, Mr. Shapiro. I'm normally a very nice man.
Well, I wish you a lot of luck in your fight that you have in the hospitals. I want to talk about 11, which is a communication from the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners, and they want to extend the taxi cab franchises from March 31st to July 31st. I don't know how many people are really understanding of the taxi cab situation. There's a lot of people who come here in the audience and they're talking for, it's very important to them to get their points across. The basic facts are that you have approximately 2,300 franchises existing in LA, and you have roughly 2,000 bandit cabs who are operating outside the law. New York City, with a population of twice ours, has got 12,000, indicating there's a need for 6,000. But somehow or other, for the last 20 years, you've had 2,300 franchises here, and they convince you that there's no need for any other additional franchises. 2,300 is enough, even though they even point out there's 150 unfilled. My point is thus this: The bandit cabs would not exist if there were no need for their services, regardless of the fact that you say you have no enforcement and there's 4,000 bandits in the entire county. The amount of money that's involved, $64 a month and $600 for the year, is not that much that these cabs wouldn't pay and become franchised if the opportunity were there. But if you don't allow more cabs to come in legally, then you have the situation continuing and continuing. And I don't think it's very good for the atmosphere in the city of Los Angeles to have bandit cabs operating with impunity and operating without proper conditions, without driver licenses, and without good conditions of their car. Something has to be done about it, and I think the easiest way is to look into the proposition of extending the amount of authorized taxi cabs. Mr. President?
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, there's no report on this item either. Maybe Mr. Savornich or somebody can tell us how it got started.
This is an extension, Mr. ...
I know, but I like to ...
If we don't get it approved today, it will, there'll be a period of time when there's no service at all.
Due to expire March 31st, so you can get ...
Yeah, I know, but it takes 30 days for the ordinance.
All right. Let me just ask Mr. Savornich. Anyone else? Maybe the department can tell us how many franchises are out there, what are they representing? You know, there has to be someone at least come and give us something.
Mr. President, members of the council, if I may help Mr. Holden a little bit.
No, just on my time, if you just hold it to the department, it's moving forward. I want to hear from the department. If they can't help me, I know you can, and that's important, Mr. Hernandez. No, I just ...
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. James Ogazaki, Assistant General Manager of LA DOT. We came to you back in July saying that we had a program to go out to RFP, and we expect that the RFP process to be completed sometime around April. What happened was, as you saw, the item came to you a couple of weeks ago. There's about three items in the RFP that the council has a concern with. It was referred back to T Committee. In the meanwhile, there is a sunset on the current ordinance that expires March 31st. So, if we do not extend the ordinance for another three months, which is a three-month delay that we have experienced to date on the processing of the RFP and awarding of the contract, these contractors or these operators and the taxis will be operating like any other bandit. And we would have to enforce upon them, and that will not be a good thing for the city. So, we're asking that we get an extra three months of extension on the current operations of taxis in Los Angeles.
Just a couple of questions. One is that July 31st takes us right up to the convention. And if you don't have a franchise agreement in place by then, what will happen? If you're in a transition at that point in time, how does that affect the convention and the need to transport people? And how are you going to, you know, transition from where we are now to the new franchise operation type?
That's a very good question, and let me explain in two ways. Number one, during the discussions, there were, in fact, city council people also suggested, you know, giving a longer timeframe for the ordinance so that after the DNC, we could award the contract to the new franchisees. But I want to point out that the taxi industry, over the last 25 years, have been asking for these extensions. So, we wanted to keep them on a short fuse, and we thought the DNC, coming of the DNC, would help us to expedite the RFP process and bringing the new contractors on board. If that fails, however, there is an opportunity for council, and the city will, the department will bring an additional extension to you, but I, the commissioners, as well as the department staff, believe that we should keep the industry on a short fuse rather than give them infinite amount of time for this existing ordinance.
A closing statement, Mr. President. James, the fact of matter is that five months may not, three months, what do you have?
Three months is what we're asking at this time.
Three months may not give us what we need when it comes to the convention, nor is it guaranteed that we're going to have the RFPs out there in the field released. I would suggest that we maybe, the guarantee that we're going to have some kind of transportation during the convention, we can say up to four months, and it may be three, it may be two. Would you want to just add a month just in case, just we have a problem and do not have to come back?
I'm sure he doesn't mind, Mr. Holden.
So, why don't we just say up to four months?
Well, why don't we just, this is until July 31st.
Yeah, you see.
Why don't we make it till August 31st?
That'll guarantee what you want.
Or sooner, if you get the bids back. Couldn't we write it that way?
Yeah. That's right. And it can't be the emergency ordinance with the president. With 12 votes, it goes into effect immediately.
Well, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Weingard, did you hear the motion extended?
No, I'm sorry. I was talking to the CEO.
Pay attention, will you please? August 31st will be the date, or sooner. It all depends if they get the bids back.
All right. I think Transportation drafted the ordinance so they can just make the amendment.
Yeah, but you're the city attorney.
Yes, we can approve it today, and we will, our office will sign off on it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, and again, I think it's clear why we were having to extend these franchises. I don't think it's necessarily our will to do that. However, because we are dealing with some of the issues, for example, that Mr. Shapiro talked about, new franchise areas, new rules and regulations as to how taxi cabs will operate in the city of Los Angeles, and there hasn't been total consensus on that issue. We sent it back to the Transportation Committee, basically back to the commission because we're hoping that the commission can have a bona fide majority vote on the consensus agreements, and then it come back to this council for approval so that the RFP can be released. Now, again, when we talk about taxi cab franchises, I agree that, again, the number of seals that we have out there in the city of Los Angeles might not be sufficient, but those are things that are still being discussed. And the convention is coming in August. I tended to agree with the Department of Transportation's recommendation of July 31st. But at the same time, we're not going to be able to accomplish the task. I don't have a problem with Mr. Holden's amendment. I just want to get the perception of the department. Do they have a problem? I understood what James said in regards to what he wanted, why the department felt that shortly should be there. But realistically, do you think we'll be ready July 31st to issue new franchises?
Realistically, no, and let me explain why. At the time that the original motion and the report was prepared, we moved this to council in early February. Subsequent to that was the meeting in which you asked us to reconsider, so that did add additional time. So, the extra month may be something that council can consider.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with the motion that has been recommended by Mr. Holden?
I do not. I don't think the department does, nor the board, because of the extra time that the council requested us to reconsider this in committee.
Then I will support Mr. Holden's motion.
Are we just, excuse me, Gail Weingard, are we just changing the date to August 31st? Are you asking that it be, if the department is saying that they need more time, then maybe we should just go ahead and change the date to the August 31st in any case?
Yeah, and I think Mr. Holden's motion was August 31st or sooner, whichever, whenever the department will credit.
I like the second or sooner better than just setting it at August 31st, if you don't mind.
Let me see if that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Savornich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, yesterday in my office, I had a very thorough briefing by the Department of Transportation in regards to this issue. And one of the questions that I asked yesterday was, would it not be better to have August 31st as the date to continue the franchises to, rather than July 31st, because of the Democratic National Convention being in the city of Los Angeles during the month of August? And I was reassured by the Department of Transportation that it was not necessary to have the extension until July, August 31st because we weren't going to be, in great likelihood, awarding the franchises until after the Democratic National Convention anyway. And if we needed another month or two extension, we could do that prior to July 31st. Is that correct, Mr. Ogazaki?
That is absolutely correct, sir.
Okay. So, if there is a willingness today, however, to make sure that we do have a fail-safe in place now, I don't have a problem. I'm sure the department doesn't have a problem making it August 31st. But I think the council needs to know at a body, as a body, that contingencies have been discussed in regards to making sure that we do not engage into a refranchising process right when the Democratic National Convention is about to arrive in the city of Los Angeles, that in no certain terms, that the department knows that we would not wanting to be going through the exercise of working out all the bugs and new franchisees during the period of time when we have so many visitors to the city. And so, I don't have a problem if indeed we want to continue it to August 31st or sooner. Even though I'm hearing from the city attorney, we need to continue it to a date specific possibly, and she's checking on that right now. But I wanted you to know, colleagues, that all of these issues were on the burner as we decided whether or not to make it July 31st or August 31st.
Okay, Mr. Bernson?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, continuing this thing, considering the DNC is the only thing that we, proper thing we can do right now, plus the fact that what was presented to the committee by the commission was not acceptable, certainly not to me, and I think by at least one other member of the committee, if not both. So, we have a little bit of a conflict here, the things that need to be worked out. Essentially, if we were to move forward at this time, we would probably wind up with one taxi cab company based upon what the commission has done. Ultimately, we'd have one, we'd have one company, and that would be it. Now, there are some people that may like that, but those of us that are interested in coverage for all parts of the city know that we need to have franchise areas, and we need to have equity. So, it's proper that we put this thing over now. The committee will deal with it, and the commission, hopefully, we'll be able to get a positive vote. We never did have a positive vote out of the commission. It was a two-to-one vote, which is not a majority vote, so that came back, came to our committee. So, they didn't even have the three votes that were necessary for a majority. So, there is not consensus on this at this time. And we don't need a conflict before the convention. We need to have unanimity, and we need to have tranquility. So, I would urge an aye vote on this. I know that Mr. Savornich and Mr. Hernandez, who served with me on transportation, will stick our heads together and try to come up with something reasonable. And maybe we can even get the commission to go along, and then we can have a consensus. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco?
First of all, point of information, is the motion right now for August 31st? Is that the motion on the floor?
That was the amendment.
Okay, I like to move the previous question on that.
Okay. Okay.
I was just asking what was on the table.
Okay, he was just asking a point of order. Previous question, prepare the roll. Previous question has been imposed. Okay, now we have the 11 as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Fourth with. Next item.
Item number 16 called special.
All right, Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. President and council members, item number 16 concerns the Prima, or Prima, program, P-R-I-M-A, which is not defined, and nobody seems to know, and I've asked about six people, what Prima is. But it's obvious that it has something to do with inventory and management, and that you want to appoint this man, Robert Jensen, to this position of program manager, and you want to exempt him from civil service provisions. Well, what we understand about this program is when Joel Wax was head of the Government Efficiency Committee, there were many examples that the controller had found out, the order of control had found out about loss of money and loss of time on the purchasing program. And I imagine this Prima program is set up that you can gain, that you won't lose so much money, and you won't lose so much time, and the bills will get paid on time, and maybe you can restore some of the good name and the good credibility of the city in dealing with the people of the city who like to do business with them. But Prima is a $30 million project, and it cannot be delayed while the city conducts a lengthy recruitment and process. So, you're taking this guy that you got in there because he's currently involved with all parts of the Prima project, and he's overseeing the implementation of the new material management services system and accounts payable. Well, I hope so. I hope this man can do it because ... I hope this man can do it, because he's been trying to do it for a long time. And I know the conditions that existed when the auditors discovered all these shortcomings still exist. I don't believe that they've changed, and I don't see any reports from this Mr. Jensen or from the department to show what's happening in there. But I do know it's a disgrace the way this department has been handling its methods for the past five years, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this item? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 21 called special.
All right, Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. President, item 21 concerns, again, removing the civil service exemption from the appointment of Assistant General Manager to the Department of Transportation, D O T. This man is supposed to have 100 employees under him and reports directly to the General Manager. And this is a request because there's complications shown in here where the position of Assistant General Manager was promoted to be manager of the department, and the position has previously been filled through civil service and was recently appointed by emergency appointment. You heard the comments that I made about control of the taxi cab situation in the City of L.A., which when your staff came here, nobody asked any questions about that. Do you need any more positions than the 2,300 that you got, 2,300 franchises? Is it needed? There was just not answered whatsoever. Is the taxi cab situation comparable to New York? And if not comparable to New York and other major cities, why not? Why is the situation always bad, and it's been bad, and it's continuing to be bad? Now, this General Manager, Assistant General Manager, you're going to appoint for the D O T, is going to have a lot to say about this matter. And I wonder if he knows how the department has been operating, and running away from the situation where you have a small number of franchises to give out, you have an ungodly amount of people coming in to get franchises and not being permitted, you have banded cabs running around like men, nobody to enforce the law against them. This situation continues, and why doesn't this man come up here and see if he can answer some of these questions, Mr. President?
Okay, Brian Hutchins.
Because this, I really wanted to address item 22, which is the same thing about waiving civil service. But this item is equally appropriate as Mr. Shapiro referred to the taxi cab, item number 11, and the Democratic National Committee meeting, conference, the Democratic Conference. And what I really want to address here is that the city must have some say over the fact that CNN is forcing The Times to only go with one-third, to exclude one-third of the total Democratic field, which is on the ballot in California, as well as 28 other states so far. There are three Democrats with federal matching funds.
Are we talking on item 21?
Yes, because I'm so suspicious of Mayor Reardon's appointments that have to do with the Democratic National Committee, I mean, the conference in August. And I have some materials here about this.
Okay.
And I also want to show this poster, because it's relevant. It's the poster of Al Gore and George Bush, J.R., J.R. Gore and J.R. Bush.
Okay.
And there is a third Democratic candidate, and he's on the ballot. And why is he not included in the CNN Times debate? Is it because CNN is forcing The Times not to do so?
Because we're talking about item 21, and we're not talking about the debate tomorrow night or the next night. So thank you. Thank you very much, Brian. I hope you pass that word on to Santa Monica. What is your point?
Under the new charter, isn't that position exempt anyway? On July 1st?
No. You still have a process.
You still, well, but under the new charter, the mayor can replace at will the department heads and the assistant managers now.
But we're not under the new charter yet.
I understand, but do we, you know, this is already March. I'll vote for it, I'm just, you know.
All right, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to register my opposition to this based on the alarming number of positions that are coming through exempt from civil service.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That is approved, next item.
Item number five is held on the desk.
Mr. Holden, are you ready for number five?
Yes, if anybody want to talk about it, fine. Are we going to cross?
I think you're the only ones who want to talk about it, but.
All right, I talked to Mr. Hernandez. He said this matter was given, released, heard in the Housing Community Redevelopment Committee, and he waived the hearing for his committee, and the whole project will come back to his committee. And I'm satisfied with that. After all, he is my seatmate, and he told me that's what he's going to do.
Okay, Mr. Wax, you want to be heard on item number five?
No, I want us to move ahead today on it, John. It's in our district, and I think there's a time limit, there's a deadline. And it will have to come back to us, but they just need to lock up the funding today, and then anything will have to come back through C E D and the council. But they have to make a decision today.
Mr. Wax, we're going to be more glad to do that by time, as long as you can repeat something that Mr. Holden said.
Can I repeat something Mr. Holden said?
I just want to know if you were listening to him.
I can repeat what he said before. He wanted to hold it until the staff got here.
Okay, what Mr. Holden said is that we had waived it out of our committee, so there had been some kind of dialogue with us, and we waived it out of our committee because we understand the urgency.
Yes, and we appreciate that cooperation.
It was going to be coming back to our committee.
Yes, exactly.
And so he was trying to explain that, and I think we all understand now. When I waived it, I didn't get a chance to speak to Mr. Holden.
I appreciate your cooperation, because it couldn't happen without it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard? We have item five before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, next item.
Did you wish that to go forthwith?
Yes, forthwith on that.
Not on the agenda, special number one, findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Okay, we have, could we have some attention, please? Special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion has to do with the HUD policy of evicting tenants, long-term tenants, and the councilwoman Goldberg is bringing in a motion which is asking the council to approve her meeting with the council representatives, the Housing Department, Legal Services, to meet with HUD this week in order to develop an M O U with the city to set forth HUD's policies and procedures regarding all pending and resolution of all pending eviction procedures. She's also asking that the city attorney bring in amendments to the rent stabilization ordinance to protect the tenants living under HUD properties. And it's my understanding that the meeting would be imminent, and therefore that the council would need to make those findings.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings.
Well, even on the findings, Mr. President, I think that it's important for Mr. Furia and Mrs. Chick to hear this, and Mr. Pacheco also, because just yesterday, we talked about an item such as this, where it relates to policy, and an urgency matter, is going to be suggested that the mayor and the council president address something that's so imminent, whereas now here's, Mr. President.
Well, Mr. Holden, I don't think it's before us unless we have the findings.
All right, go ahead, have the finding.
Prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Now we have the public hearing.
Right, now, what I'm saying.
Now we're going to have a public hearing, Mr. Holden.
Okay.
Okay, we have Christian Abasto, I think that's the name, and Mark Bender. You want to be heard on this?
Good morning, council members. My name is Christian Abasto. I am an attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, and I am representing a number of tenants that are being evicted by the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development. Most of these tenants have received a 30-day notice, no cause, with no offer of relocation, and majority of tenants have had unlawful detainers filed already. I'd like to introduce to the council Ms. Evelyn Everhart. She's 70 years old, and she's lived at her property, which used to be rent-controlled before HUD acquired the ownership in the property. She's lived at the property for 10 years. Her rent's only $318. And like I said, she received a 30-day notice, no cause, with no offer of relocation. And at this moment, she's in the process of an eviction action. I'd like to introduce Ms. Angelina Estrada. She's lived at her property, which, again, used to be a rent-controlled property, for 21 years. Her rent's only $325. She's 68 years old. And again, she first became aware of HUD acquiring the property through a 30-day notice, no cause, without any offer of relocation assistance. And two other clients that I'd like to introduce, Ms. Maria Renderos, Mr. Jacinto Lopez, who, again, are under the same situation, have received a 30-day notice, no cause, from HUD without any offer of relocation. Ms. Beatriz Martinez, right here, she also received a 30-day notice, again, no cause, no offer of relocation. And in Martinez's case, especially interesting, her property has been under the rent escrow account program for the past two years, and it's in a serious state of disrepair. And she's been a great tenant, posting her rent to the rent escrow account program for the past two years. All of these tenants, again, are under the same circumstances that have received no offer of relocation. There's been confusion in all these cases as to who the owner is. Most of these tenants became aware of HUD being the owner through a 30-day notice. In the majority of these cases, there was no negotiation with them till our office was involved. Otherwise, they filed the eviction actions without even talking to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Bender.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Mark Bender. I'm a longtime staff attorney at Betz Edic Legal Services here in Los Angeles. I also brought folks today, two of my clients, Ms. Nava, Mr. Nava, and Ms. Salvatiera, if you could please stand up. And what I want to say to the council is that these folks that are friends at LAFLA and ourselves brought today are the tip of the iceberg. And why we think it's so important that city council act and act immediately is because the people that we brought today, and we think the hundreds, if not thousands, of rent-controlled Los Angeles city tenants who have fallen out of rent control only because their private rent-controlled landlord lost their HUD loan through a foreclosure. And we believe that when the city council first exempted the HUD housing from the rent control ordinance, this situation of private rent-controlled tenants under a private rent-controlled landlord who just happened to lose their HUD loan through foreclosure and became exempt through that basis and fell out of rent control, that that was never intended. This is a loophole in the law which has come to our attention over the last couple of years at all the legal aid agencies in the City of Los Angeles and the few fortunate tenants who have the courage to make it to legal aid. We're concerned about the thousands and thousands out there who are losing their rent-controlled tenancies out of this loophole. And we hope that the council will strongly endorse council member Goldberg's amendment to fix this change in the law. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. That's all the cards we have, so the public hearing is closed. I'm going to call Ms. Goldberg first, it was her motion.
Yes, thank you. This really came to our attention because a constituent of mine, Beatriz Martinez, who's 84 years old, was being evicted without any assistance and didn't know what she was going to do. She had lived for a very long time in her place and was really quite desperate. As we called some of the housing advocates that are here today, we found out this was far more widespread than just the one person who managed to call our office. So what this has is two really moving portions. The first portion, and by the way, the part where it says meet with council office representatives, that's any council office that wishes to be involved. We don't need to do this exclusively from our office. But also with the Housing Department, to develop with HUD a M O U along with the advocates for these various tenants, to develop an M O U for the interim procedures citywide so that we can protect people who will not necessarily call anybody for help. And then the second part is to direct the city attorney to propose whatever rent stabilization ordinance amendments that are needed to protect tenants of HUD in the future from being displaced without any financial assistance for relocation simply because the guaranteed loan that was there from HUD has been foreclosed upon. So we ask for your support for both of these today, and obviously, the ordinance would come back, we hope, within a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
I just saw Ms. Andy Amata in the room. Is Ann, are you in the back room? I just want to ask her, as a point of information, I think we need to know, whether the mayor's office have a position on this motion or on this policy? Because in not-too-distant future, it's going to require a response time within 10 days for the mayor to respond to something like this because of the charter change. To your knowledge, does the mayor have a position on this issue? Oh, that's what I mean. The fact of the matter is that Ms. Goldberg responded to a constituent. Now, because of the charter amendments, and was discussed yesterday, giving the mayor 10 days to react to whatever we do or he would like to do, you wouldn't be able to do what Ms. Goldberg is doing today. Therefore, the time would run, and we would not have an opportunity to correct the problem which we not know exists. And I tried to make that point yesterday. The charter was framed in a way where it does give us some latitude, but because of the politics that was going to go around that committee, and perhaps even the council, it may deny us an opportunity to be responsive, as Ms. Goldberg is today, to a need that must be met, like right now. So when that might have come before us, and it will, even though the chairperson is talking and will not know a word about what we've said on this issue and how important it is, she's going to stand up and hoop and holler. But I would say to you that I think you need to know, and here's a clear example, and why it's so important that the council have the authority to respond to a need, or shall we say, a crisis which now exists. And I'm going to ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Furia.
I just want to underscore what should be our unanimous support for Ms. Goldberg's motion. Many of us have been following this issue, not only in the paper, but in general. And it's really scandalous that, of all agencies, we were facing a federal agency evicting the poorest of our residents in the city. And Ms. Goldberg's motion, I understand, really underlines what HUD has already said would be its current policy, but it memorializes it in a way that I think will, for all time, assure that in the City of Los Angeles, evictions of this nature can no longer occur. So I think it's timely, it's important. And Ms. Goldberg and Mr. Hernandez both, I think, deserve a lot of recognition for advocating tenaciously in behalf of these tenants, both in this motion today and in prior private actions before today.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I also rise for unanimous support, and I thank Ms. Goldberg, I thank Mr. Pacheco, and all the members who are expressing a concern here. You know, to put it in context so that we properly understand that if a bank had made a loan to a private party, and that bank foreclosed on that loan, they then wanted to evict tenants, they would have to pay relocation costs. This case, because it's HUD, they're using the exemption. That makes no sense. And I think that, again, when we created the ordinance, nobody anticipated this kind of activity happening. I think HUD also wants to be cooperative in this process, because that's not their mission. But they're facing the realities of the obligation of the law, and the fact that they are exempt from that law. And it's the banking institutions who are taking advantage of this issue. So from my perspective, you know, I'm sorry it took people actually being evicted for us to find out about this loophole. And at no time should we basically allow for the public sector to have a greater right than the private sector. And when we talk about human rights, when we talk about the quality of life, and when you talk about someone's dwelling, the reality is the federal government is no different than local government. And so from my perspective, I think that this motion should have a unanimous vote. I think that we'll find a lot of consensus in it. And basically, it's going to force the federal government to deal with the same regulations that everybody else has to deal with. But more important, not allow for the banking institutions to take advantage of the loophole.
Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, I understand that the development of this issue really came about because HUD has changed their position. Originally, when the ordinance was drafted, HUD would not move on properties where there were tenants, and since then, they have changed their position. The only concern I have is, as Chair of the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee, I was sort of alarmed to hear about this, especially from the advocates who are from legal aid through the newspaper or through this motion. I think we could have done some proactive work if they had come to my office earlier and identified this problem as a problem that we needed to address and close this loophole from the city side. I do support the motion, obviously, because of the urgency, but I think in the future, these agencies should be a little more proactive with my office, considering they're in the middle of what looks like litigation right now. So I think we need to pass this and get this loophole closed, and we'll see if HUD understands the position of our tenants here in the city and will change their policy back to the old policy of not evicting or removing on properties that have tenants.
Mr. Savornich.
Yes, I would like to commend all of my colleagues to bringing this to the forefront of the council. One of the things to which we have increasingly struggled with in the city of Los Angeles is that as we try to redevelop neighborhoods and as we try to put homes on the market which have fallen into disrepair and/or have been boarded up, a lot of the boarded-up houses in many of our districts are HUD-owned. And there has been a serious attempt in the past by the city of Los Angeles to get these houses reconstructed, revitalized, and put back on the market for new homeownership opportunities. And there is still an information lag, and there still is a process and procedure lag between HUD and local jurisdictions to get this housing stock back on the market. And so I would think, in addition to embracing the motion that we have before us today, I would encourage both the Housing Department and the Housing Committee and this council as a body to continue to put pressure on HUD, to put hundreds, if not thousands, of these homes that have been foreclosed on by HUD back on the market and be able to bring homeownership to neighborhoods that really need it. So while I support the endeavor that we are doing today, I think we need to take one step beyond that and continue to put pressure on the federal government in order to make some of the worst housing in the city, that housing which has been boarded up or abandoned or foreclosed, make it, again, a productive part of neighborhoods.
We have special one before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith. Next item.
Mr. President, also not on the agenda is special two. Findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Special two.
Yes, this is a motion in which it talks about the allegations that have come forth in today's paper, which involves the role of federal agents in Rampart and the INS. This motion asks that a joint local, state, and federal task force investigate Rampart, and it would in no way supersede the police, the Board of Police Commissioners or the Board of Inquiry, or the, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose today and that there is an immediate need to act.
And I would advocate that that happened because of the reports that arose as recently as this morning about allegations of the FBI's role with the INS in the Rampart issues.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
The matter is before us, so Mr. Fuer, I'm going to call on you first.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I want to identify, we're focusing on the criminal side of the Rampart issue. What's before us does not implicate the Board of Inquiry's work or the work of the commission or the inspector general. Recall that just a few days ago, the FBI was called in to join the police department to help investigate the criminal, allegations of criminal misconduct in the department that arose, that are continuing to arise, from the Rampart scandal. Unfortunately, we read as recently as this morning about a cloud that has been cast over the FBI as an allegedly objective participant in that thorough and extensive criminal investigation. This motion would call on us to elevate the investigation and the prosecutorial aspects of Rampart to Washington, to have the Department of Justice in Washington assume authority over a task force to be composed of local and state authorities, as well as federal authorities, with two charges, to investigate Rampart-related issues and to prosecute where necessary. The investigation would be undertaken by agents other than FBI authorities who have been implicated. We'll find out with what veracity, but implicated in stories as recently as today's. The federal authorities in Washington have at their disposal an array of investigative agencies on whom they could draw to get a team assembled to perform this work. And I want to underscore, this is, times have changed from last week, when the FBI was called in to participate with the police department and augment their investigation. This week, there is at least a cloud, a taint, a calling into question of the FBI's ability to perform that role at just the moment when all of us have agreed that we ought to be elevating public confidence in the justice system and in the ability of government officials to thoroughly investigate the Rampart issues, which is why I think it's important for us to distinguish this day from the day when the FBI was brought into play, and to distinguish, again, this effort from the Board of Inquiry's work, which will be released in a very few hours, which will be scrutinized thoroughly by the police commission and the inspector general, because those issues have to do with, how do we get to Rampart in the first place? What structural changes are necessary to assure it doesn't happen again? Issues like that. The criminal issues, which have been the role of the task force, need to be investigated at the highest levels possible by entities in whom the public can have complete confidence, where there is no cloud, no calling into question of objectivity or integrity in Rampart-related issues. So that's the spirit motivating my motion. It merely calls on DOJ to pursue this goal, and I urge unanimous support.
Thank you. Before we continue on this, Mr. Holden, I know you have a presentation. We have some very distinguished people here, and I know they have other important meetings to go to today, so I call upon Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Mr. President, members, we are honored to have a very distinguished guest in the chambers today, and I might say commander. He's the National Commander of the American Legion, newly elected. Mr. Farrar is also a military person. You wouldn't be the—
And an American Legion person, too. Pass commander.
Thank you, Commander.
And we have with him here, joining us is Mr. H. Melvin Napier. He's the aide to the National Commander. We have Willie Wilkins, Department Commander, the American Legion's Department of California. Mr. Woodrow Albaka, Public Relations Department of California. And we also have, Mr. President, Leonard Tellegren, Commander ninety-eight, ninety-nine for San Gabriel. It's indeed my pleasure to welcome the Idaho Attorney General, State of Idaho, Al Lance, who's deserving of the highest commendation from the Los Angeles City Council for being elected, the National Commander of the American Legion during the eighty-first National Convention in Anaheim, California. Whereas he was, and we all were raised, but raised on a family farm, and they grew big potatoes. And native McComb, Ohio. He earned a bachelor's degree in English from South Dakota State University and a Doctor of Jurisprudence degree from the University of Toledo School of Law. He's married his college sweetheart, Sherry Holden. You made a good choice. In nineteen sixty-nine, and they had three children. Whereas during his twenty years of American Legion membership, he earned, he served as a commander of the American Legion Department of Idaho, National Executive Committee man, and chairman of the organization's National Foreign Relations Commission. Attorney General, he was commissioned as a second lieutenant in the United States Army on June third, nineteen seventy-four, and served as captain in the United States Army Judge Advocate General Corps until nineteen seventy-eight. Upon his completion of his military service, he established a private law practice in Meridian, Idaho, where he has been an active member of the American Legion post one thirteen since nineteen seventy-nine. Whereas throughout his legal career and American Legion service, Lance has been an outspoken advocate of veteran benefits, the rights of crime victims, the protection of children from sex offenders, and the eradication of domestic terrorism. His advocacy convinced Idaho voters to elect him state representative in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-two, and the Attorney General of the state in nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-eight. You want to be president, too, don't you? Whereas he recently completed a one-year term on the Executive Committee of the National Association of Attorney Generals, and he is currently chairman of the Conference of Western Attorney Generals. He's a former president, he did make it, of Meridian Chamber of Commerce and served on the Board of Directors of Idaho Military Historical Society. Now, therefore, be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council hereby honor Al Lance for his being elected National Commander of the American Legion in nineteen ninety-nine and for his outstanding contribution to the people of the United States of America. I'm very, very pleased, as an American Legion also member, Jack Robinson Post invited two to present to you this certificate of resolution.
Okay, Mr. Holden, we want to hear from the National Commander.
I'm going to put you to finish, Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, well—
Well, we're going to take a picture with you, too.
No, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Mr. President, fellow Legionnaire, Councilman Holden. Thank you very much for the high honor bestowed upon me today. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the American Legion, we are the largest group of wartime veterans in the United States, consisting of approximately three million members nationwide, with an auxiliary of approximately one point five million. Here in the state of California, we have about one hundred and fifty thousand American Legionnaires, about five hundred and eighty-seven posts, one hundred and forty posts here in Los Angeles County, and about thirty posts here in the city of Los Angeles. Let me say as an aside, as the Attorney General of the State of Idaho, I saw by your special agenda item number one, that you two and the city of Los Angeles are having some difficulty with the federal government. But my Office of Attorney General in the state of Idaho, about twenty-five percent of my total budget is earmarked for fighting the nuances of the federal government in terms of also evicting Idahoans from public lands and forests and places where we made a living for generations and generations. Let me say, Mr. President, that the American Legion here in the state of California donates thousands and thousands and thousands of person-hours, not only in the VA hospitals, but also your state veterans' homes, but also doing our youth programs that encompass thousands of Californians here in California. Young people engage in American Legion baseball, which has been sponsored by the American Legion for decades, and in addition to that, of course, we have the oratorical contest, the Boys State Program and the Boys Nation Program. But Legionnaires in fifteen thousand communities across the United States make communities just a little bit better, and those thirty posts here in the city of Los Angeles clearly assist you and your efforts in terms of trying to ensure that the youth of America and the youth of Los Angeles have good constructive programs. And our Legionnaires are very proud. We're proud to be here today, sir, and I thank you for the courtesies of Councilman Holden, as well as you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Just one greetings, Mr. President. I want to announce to the commander, National Commander, that Ms. Heather French, the Miss America Organization, sends her best wishes and greetings because she's done so much for the veterans, and she wants you to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Okay, we have, we'll go back, Mrs. Chek, did you—
She doesn't want to speak. I do. But I would prefer my time to be held because I've seen that the chief has come in, and I was wondering if he wanted to address us. I would be interested in hearing what he has to say before I speak. No, he came in here. Am I, am I correct, you wanted to speak?
All right, get up there then, if you want to speak. Get up, get your tail up there.
No, I'm not putting it on—
Yeah, I'm not putting it on. I wanted to speak.
You want to—
Yes, I'd like to just take a moment and comment on the proposed motion. I think that at best, this is premature in the fact that we certainly have had two or three reports in L.A. Times that have reported about some unholy alliances between the Rampart crash, also the issues of dealing with INS and possibly other federal agencies. None of that has been verified, and as we know that in many instances, as we relate personally, that often stories that are initially talked about in the press, when we get down to the final analysis, they may not be as accurate as they first portray. The other issues, I talked personally with the Assistant Director of INS a day or ago, last, it would be Friday, that said that, basically, they are not aware of these circumstances. They commented that on dealing with these issues, that they felt that the employees that were anonymous, that gave the information, in their mind, were disgruntled employees. And I think when we look at the substance of the article, there is certainly a great deal of misinformation about people's reflection of what Special Order forty means to the department, and that clearly, there was never an intent by that order to say that LAPD and INS would never have a conversation, and it specifically, in fact, is in that article that says when, or that order, that when there is criminal violations, particularly felonies on bookings or high-grade misdemeanors, that there's a mandate that we contact INS. We also know that in eighty-six, the sheriffs added a asterisk to the booking, the consolidated booking form, to where they want to know about every foreign-born person that's booked, not saying they're here illegally, but certainly, that gives INS the ability to check the booking records to determine who is foreign-born in the system. But we believe that in bringing the FBI into this investigation, we announced that last week, we're just meeting with them this week to set up the protocols and how they will participate in the investigation, but to stigmatize the FBI as not being capable of assisting us, and now to move the criminal, which, again, I remind you, there's nothing in the criminal case that we know of publicly or confidentially that was not developed by LAPD investigators. And it is pretty clear that to have a situation to where we bring in, whether it's a multi-level task force or any task force, that basically takes over this criminal case, that we are in danger early on of losing some statutes because there's no way another agency can be formed to come in and take over this case. We have a number of issues, administrative and criminally, that we're going to deal with. And I think that we need to allow the system to work and look into these allegations and allow us to report back from both the federal level and LAPD as to just exactly the sum and substance of these allegations, but they certainly, in my judgment, do not warrant allow us to report back from both the federal level and LAPD as to just exactly the sum and substance of these allegations. But they certainly, in my judgment, do not warrant that those articles to be the basis that we change our direction and take out the criminal investigation out of the hands of the Los Angeles Police Department that has now worked on this case for almost two years.
Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, Mrs. Chick.
Thank you, Chief Parks. You know, in terms of what the motion before us talks about and suggests in terms of objective, impartial resources from various levels of government, from the Department of Justice, I'm not sure, colleagues, that we truly and fully know exactly what is going on from those different entities as we speak. I certainly know that since 1993-94, the Department of Justice has had, in a sense, an open investigation, albeit not a closed one, that was authorized for the department to look at the conduct and practices of local law enforcement, and they have the ability to walk in and out as they please. But what's interesting here is, in a way, it feels like deja vu, and we're singing a similar song as a fairly emotional fight last week in terms of who's leading the band here? I mean, is it the chief and the department? Is it the commission that we've chosen as the bandleader? Should we be looking to the mayor? Is it the council? Should it be the district attorney, the Department of Justice? And I find that what we're doing here, more and more, is relying on the media to be our source of education and information, and then we're reacting. You know that I was very much in support of Mr. Wax's motion, being sent to Public Safety Committee with a vote of support that we want to go further in looking at how we can do something along those lines, because I felt we needed to send messages if nothing else. But I'm wondering a couple of things on this. First of all, that instead of doing the action today, and hearing from Chief Parks on that, that similarly to Mr. Wax's motion, this motion gets sent to Public Safety Committee. But in the meantime, not to delay the need for any and all appropriate resources, I ask the question and would like it answered, what is the best way for the city council to communicate in a two-way communication with the Department of Justice? Is it to ask the mayor to write a letter, or to vote and direct our council president to communicate on our behalf and request the appropriate members of the Department of Justice to come in on a very short timeline, this week preferably, and brief us on what agencies are already involved, to what level, what their recommendations are, what they see is real and substantive, and what thus far has perhaps proven not to be? And that it's in listening to them that will also help shape what we do and do not need to do to get the investigation, both criminal and otherwise, that all of us want to have done as thoroughly and quickly as possible. Thank you. I would like an answer to the question from the city attorney from the CLA to that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
The council may ask, and I would suggest you do it through your president, you may want to do it with the president of the council and the mayor, it would be the council's decision as to how to do that. I would think that it would be a better thing to do, asking from the council president representing the council, to ask the Department of Justice, I don't know what their timeline would be.
Okay, I'm going to move. That we do that?
Mrs. Chick has a motion that we do with the city attorney.
Whatever the vote is on today's motion, I think that that needs to happen, and I would like to ask that it happened as quickly as possible, in other words, the letter to go out, for us to support that, asking for the Department of Justice to send the appropriate representatives, I would assume we would direct it to our U.S. Attorney here, and to schedule that on Wednesday or Friday.
That's a motion, Mrs. Chick?
Yes.
Do we have a second to that motion?
And I'm talking scheduling the briefing for city council.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, thank you. Okay. The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I wasn't laughing at the chief when he said it was premature. I was looking at Mr. Fuhrer and wanting to see the response on his face as he heard his own words back from a week ago. Mr. Fuhrer, the taint didn't just arise now, there's always been a taint over this, there's always been a cloud over this, it's just clearer now. And the taint isn't over just the criminal investigation, it's over the entire matter. And you got to stop wrapping yourselves around the Christopher Commission, except perhaps to ask why it hasn't been fully implemented. You know, we've never come to closure on Rodney King, and we're paying the price for it. I think the revelations today in the paper were stunning. They, I was, I just was, I couldn't believe it when I saw it. And I think you have to start asking yourself the big questions, Mike. If the FBI pressured the INS, and the FBI pressured the U.S. Attorney, who pressured the FBI? And who's going to ask that question? And who's going to get the answer? And if the FBI knew about what was going on, and the INS knew what was going on, and the U.S. Attorney knew what was going on, why didn't the people that you're asking to make the investigation know what's going on? Who's going to ask those questions? Who's going to give an answer that's believable to the people? This is a crisis of the greatest magnitude, and we can't be too proud or too ashamed to ask for help. All of us in the end are going to be better off. So obviously, I support the motion, just as I supported the past ones. But you're going to have to, I think, come to grips and support a motion to look at the broader picture by an outside look, not to, because if there's the one thing I have convinced that the police can do, it's to find out who did a criminal act and punish them. I know that they're determined to do that. But if we don't find out how it happens, if we don't find out why it goes undetected, if we don't find out what to do about it in the future, it's going to keep on repeating itself, just as it's repeated itself in the last eight years. So it's time to put aside all of this stuff that is holding us back from doing what inevitably we have to do. When I said last week, it's just a matter of time, I didn't realize it would be this quick, and it's going to be, it's there, you got to come to grips with it, and we all have to come together on it. And we need all the help we can get, and we need to look at everything that has to be looked at.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, you know, I understand where this is coming from and why it's coming, but I just think that we have to give the process an opportunity. The chief is doing the correct job, in my opinion, of investigation. We need to let the Board of Rights come to a report, we need to let the commission do their job. You know, you may not trust the FBI, you may not trust the INS, there's a lot of people that don't trust us, and you know, a lot of people don't trust the Justice Department. This is the same Justice Department that handled the investigation of the president. I mean, who do we trust? You know, if I were running for office, for higher office or something like that, I might make a motion and come in and say, well, who shall we get that we can trust? Shall we get the Pope? Shall we get the head rabbi from Jerusalem or whatever? And maybe we can get divine guidance. There's got to be somebody that we can trust. The truth of the matter is, I trust Chief Parks, and I trust that he's going to make sure that he's doing the investigation and the proper investigation, the facts are going to be brought out. And if we don't have that confidence, I mean, you know, I have that confidence, and if we don't have that confidence in him, what we're really doing by bringing in all these side motions and saying we don't have confidence in the chief and the commission, is that what you want to say? I don't think so. We may need to do this eventually, I don't know, but I think it's premature. I think this should go to committee, just like Mr. Wax's motion. Mr. Wax's motion may have had some merit in the proper time. I didn't think, yes, I'm going to move that this go to the Public Safety Committee, and I would so move this go to Public Safety for review, and we can see what develops in the next few days. These things are changing so quickly that you don't know what's going to come up tomorrow. But I want to tell you something, that I have at least as much confidence and more in our chief and in the commission than I do in the Justice Department. I hate to say that, but it's true, okay? So I would urge, and I vote, let's send this to commission, let's send this to committee, let the committee take a look at it, and if it's appropriate, bring it back, and maybe we'll do that, when the chief says maybe it's time to do that. And he may say that in proper time, is that correct, chief?
At proper time.
At proper time, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
I want to, first of all, agree that this should go to committee. Second, the motion itself identifies an issue, which is that of the credibility or the role of the FBI in the current investigation. But the solution it proposes doesn't really directly deal with the problem. If the problem is the FBI's involvement in our investigation, then the solution is just to remove them, if that's a real problem. The recommended motion or the action that we're called upon to have a task force, I am not, at this point, ready to endorse any task force that has local participation. And let me explain to you why. If we're really going to ask for an independent investigation that is going to give us credibility among the community, there's one fundamental point that we need to follow. There needs to be an arms-length distance between those being investigated and the investigators. The inclusion of local, whether it be investigators from the LAPD or the DA's office, or anyone locally, does not give me that arms-length distance that I would request. The same thing on the prior motion that Mr. Wax introduced, and I use this analogy to someone else, was that if your audience is that individual who's skeptical or doesn't have faith or confidence in the police commission and the inspector general, the police commission and the inspector general are basically children of the city council and the mayor. Mr. Wax's motion had initially requested a civilian or some sort of commission or task force being created by the same two parents, the council and the mayor. So I don't see that naysayer or that audience we're trying to persuade and give confidence to having any comfort that we now create a third child who's part of our family to do this investigation. That's why, from the beginning, I have always asked, what outside experts outside the Los Angeles area has the police department used, has the police commission used? And when I see the amount of participation from outside experts, people who don't have a vested interest in our system, that's when I will decide what our next step is. That's why I'm waiting for the Board of Inquiry report, that's why I'm waiting for the police commission's work, because when you get that arms-length evaluation and analysis, then you can make a decision. So I'm not ready to support this motion as drafted, it does not resolve the problem identified in paragraph one, it's a non sequitur to me. The final point I will make is this. The LA Times articles are really good at identifying the breakdown of following policy, whether it be city policy or any other policy. Breaking or not following policy is not a criminal act. It also doesn't give rise to any rights or any basis for lawsuits in terms of those aggrieved. So there's a very unique difference between a policy being broken and a crime being committed. A policy being broken is something that the person will deal with in their personnel review. So I don't see this situation the same light as the criminal conduct that was being conducted by those police officers when they violated those defendants' rights. It's a whole different world. So the level of concern does not rise to bringing the Department of Justice for some policy that may not have been followed. Finally, the FBI and the INS at the federal level do not have a Special Order 40 policy. If they find undocumented criminals, they can follow their rules and deport that individual. They don't, Special Order 40 does not apply to them. So I would request that we support the motion to send it to committee.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Well, as Rome burns, we continue to fiddle. You know, I appreciate this motion, I'm going to support this motion, I think it will not pass, and I think that the outside world is wondering, what the heck are we doing in here? How could we be the last people in the city of Los Angeles who don't get it? This is not about the chief. If it were about the chief, we could vote up or down, you'd win, hands down. This is not about the chief. This is a crisis of confidence. This is a crisis of a kind of a constitutional type, where people really honest to God want to know that some external look is going to be taken at this so they can be reassured that everything the chief has said and will continue to say is as it is. Now, would we prefer that we wouldn't need an external okay to this? Of course we would. But I don't know where all of you are being, but where I'm being, they want something to come from the outside to bless the chief's work and all the work that's being done by the commission. That's what this is about, as I see it. It is not about whether I believe the chief is sincere, ardent, and going to get to the bottom of things. From the bottom of my heart, I believe you're going to do that. And I've said that to you privately, and I say it to you publicly, but that's not the issue before us. If that were the issue before us, I wouldn't keep voting for these motions. But we have a real crisis in this city, and it often looks like the council are the last people to notice, and I think that is really too bad. So I will support this, not because I don't have faith in the chief, actually, because I do have faith in the chief, because I have complete faith that an external view will absolutely uphold the findings. And that's how you restore confidence, is for you to do your work, for you to present the work, the work is looked at by impartial people who say, right on. And then everyone knows that the chief and the groups that he put together did the things that were be done, needed to be done. That's how I look at it, and I obviously have a perspective that some of you agree with and others disagree with, and that's the way the world goes sometimes. I would like to ask just one quick question, and then I will sit down. There is some concern now on the part after the article this morning, that INS is co-located at times in division stations. Is that true or not true?
I have no information that they're co-located, but certainly they come through the station because often we book deportation warrants, and when it's dealing with criminal activity, you can't very well separate it.
I understand that, but you understand the problem, that some of us in many of our districts have spent a long time reassuring people that if they go to the police when there's a crime, that they're not going to find at their local station that INS is waiting to say, got you, if you report the crime. So I'm concerned that we make it clear to the public that our policy on Special Order 40 has not changed, and that the chief intends for it to be carried out fully, because we will lose a tremendous amount of gains that we have made by lots of us, including your officers and lots of us council members, reassuring the public that they need to tell the police when there are crimes going on in their area, and they don't have anything to be afraid of when they do that.
I agree. We will double-check that co-location and get back with you, and we will republizize Special Order 40. And if I can just make one comment on your earlier comments, we don't disagree with the fact that people oversee what we do, but the motion seems to take away the criminal investigation from us before we're through. And what we're saying is, when we're through, the DOJ has made it clear, and they have an open case since '91 on a pattern in practice, they intend to come in and see everything we've done. But inviting the local U.S. Attorney and the FBI as we go forward clearly helps us with a great deal of resources and technology that we don't have. And so we're basically saying, whether it's the BOI, when we publish it tomorrow, we'll put it in the library, and everybody in the world will get to comment on it. And we don't disagree with that, and we believe that people should have that ability. But we don't think people should take over the BOI in its formation, nor do we think the criminal investigation should be taken from us before it's finished and it's evaluated by other resources, but that's our disagreement.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, chief, I think your interpretation to this body today in regards to Special Rule 40 almost lost my support for your investigation. And I'm disappointed to hear some of the things I've heard by some of my colleagues. You know, the reason Special Rule 40 existed, and I have fought it on several occasions to make sure it was in place, was to give the citizens of the city of Los Angeles the understanding that they were equal. understanding that they were equal, and they were not going to be treated differently because of their status. And it was because in special parts of the city, communities were intimidated. During the civil unrest, it was INS that was sent to Westlake and Pico Union. And communities were basically being intimidated from participating with law enforcement and dealing with the issue of crime. And so Special Rule 40, in my mind, is very clear. The Los Angeles Police Department is not the INS, and it does not collaborate with the INS. Because the priority for us was that the citizens of this city have trust in its police department to protect them and to serve them. And we said that minor violations are not to be reported, but felonies, yes. Multiple violations, yes. So Special Rule 40 was very clear. Now, from my perspective, I need to know if the police department is going to take seriously these proposed violations of that rule and investigate them. And how do we plan to reestablish that trust with that community? Because it has been purported that there's been a violation of that policy, but what I heard today is that the Sheriff Department has a policy -- well, that's not the Los Angeles Police Department. What I heard today, that you have been having discussions with the Assistant District Director, but in regards to the allegations, I haven't heard what your posture is. What are you going to do about the violation of that policy, if it was violated? And how is it that you're going to proceed to try and establish the trust of the immigrant community, so that they can come forward? Because as I understand, the trust of this investigation, a lot of it has to do with witnesses that were deported. A lot of it has to do with that community. And so, Chief, I was bothered when I was hearing your interpretation of Special Rule 40, because it was kind of like some of the interpretations that we've been fighting before, trying to figure out ways to collaborate with INS so that we could deal with a population differently than when we deal with other citizens. And that was my concern, because that's what I heard you saying earlier, when you were explaining Special Rule 40.
Well, first of all, I think it's a lot of information that's unclear about Special Order 40. It never says in there that we cannot have contact with INS. And I think all of the advocates that are immigration advocates that I've met with have all said, "If there's a criminal involvement, there's not an issue as it relates to dealing with INS." And we clearly say in the special order that we do not initiate investigations solely on a person's status. But if we're involved in a criminal case, and involved in that criminal case, and we make a booking, it's very clear, booking for felony, it's required that you notify INS and on high-grade misdemeanors. But also, in working, and again, as Ms. Goldberg asked, we do not have a policy, nor do we endorse having an encampment of INS agents in any one of our stations. But it doesn't say they don't get to come through there, because we often book people that they have an interest in. There's a felony warrant. We get a notice that says somebody's wanted for a crime. We book them.
Right, but the allegations that have been reported, are they being investigated?
Yes, they are. Internal Affairs started the issue on that case. The moment that that article came out in the news, we began an investigation, because that news was news to us as to those types of allegations. We're concerned enough that we talked directly to the Assistant Director here locally, saying what their impression was of that article. The information I got a day or so ago was that her impression was that those are some anonymous disgruntled employees that were articulating a position that was not the INS. And so it requires us to investigate it, and until we come to a conclusion, we can't give you any information other than what we know at the time. But Internal Affairs started their investigation the day that article came out.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Chief, based on what Mr. Hernandez spoke about, the investigation of the police department along with the INS, you keep a database of the ones who commit felonies, or book for felonies, and then, of course, export it. Do you have any ongoing information?
We have a database that shows all of our bookings. We could go back in that database and determine what charges they were booked on.
All right, on that point, just to make sure that not only Mr. Hernandez, but each and every one of us maintain, and I have no reason to question, the confidence in the department that they're in compliance with Article 40, is it? Rule, Special Order 40. Then, of course, you might want to just give us some examples. You just read back the names of the individuals, but just give us the number that we're interested in. I think that it'll alleviate Mr. Hernandez's concern, and certainly mine as well. What I don't think the council members really understand or know, that there is an organization among law enforcement offices, LAPD represented, the Sheriff Department represented, FBI represented, maybe the CIA too, I don't know, operating daily, moment by moment, in our communities. And they investigate individuals in certain types of crimes. Am I right? I don't remember the name of the organization, but you know it does exist.
We have several task forces.
Yeah, a task force. What are those task forces?
We have several of them. We work with ATF on guns. We have task forces that deal with -- one that deals with the auto theft. But there's a variety of task forces. In MOAs, we must have well over a dozen operating agreements with different agencies.
It's important for the members to know that. There's another one which has not been mentioned. I was told what it was, but I don't want to mention what it is right now. But I will say this, that there will be a time for the FBI and anybody else you want, CIA too, to come in. But I think that we should give an opportunity to the police department, as we did in the Rodney King situation, to complete the investigation. In the instance where we're not satisfied with it, then the federal government came in to investigate whether or not the civil rights of the individual's been violated. And I expect this will happen also. And we will be expecting and hoping that you turn all the information over to the federal investigative authority. I believe you would do that. I have no reason to hold it back. But not until then, you should continue your investigation. Now, your report's going to be released tomorrow?
Tomorrow, in fact, tomorrow, eight o'clock.
And you anticipate comments on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Then how would you react to the comments? Would you say, "My investigation is finished, complete," or would you go back and say, "Now I've got to reinvestigate something else"?
Well, the issue is, as far as the Board of Inquiry, we have over 100 recommendations that we start immediately to implement. If there are issues brought to our attention as it relates to our criminal investigation or administrative, that's new information, we start new cases immediately.
Now, my closing statement, and question, my closing. These individuals who complained, they worked for the INS and also the FBI, and they were being harassed, whichever the case may be, were you aware of that prior to you reading in the newspaper? During your investigation, did your investigation reveal that kind of information?
We did not have information about the INS as it relates to the issues that were brought up in the paper. We did know about the two officers that alleged that they had been stopped and believed they were abused.
That's what I mean. So I won't come back. I just wanted to make that point, that his investigation of the police department has even gone through those channels.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we all agree. We all agree that we need to fully and thoroughly investigate what's happened. I think we all agree that we need to prosecute to the fullest extent of the law those who we find to be guilty. Where we're disagreeing is on the process. There are several processes already underway, the Board of Inquiry, the criminal investigations from within the department. This council has acknowledged, approved, and committed resources for the Police Commission investigation, and resources for the Inspector General. And recently, we've had motions that call for an independent commission by Councilmember Wax, and today's motion that requests the Department of Justice participation. We're not disagreeing on what we want to accomplish. We're disagreeing a little bit on the timeline and the process itself. I believe possibly the independent commission may still happen. I believe the Department of Justice participation may still happen. If you step back and look at it from the resident's point of view, this is arguably the largest police scandal in our history, the second-largest city in the country. For the feds to have a role in clearing this up and getting to the bottom of it, I think is not -- it's only a question of time. But it's exactly that, a question of time. It's not whether or not they should be involved. In many ways, they already are, FBI officials, U.S. attorneys, et cetera, not only within the Los Angeles Police Department, but in our district attorney's office. But it's a matter of how to responsibly proceed. So I'm going to vote to send this motion to committee. But just like I said when we voted on Councilmember Wax's motion, we're not saying no today completely to the idea. We're saying no to implementing it today. And would ask that we reconsider the motion, along with Councilmember Wax's motion, once the Board of Inquiry has reported, and once we get an additional briefing on the criminal investigation from the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Chief, I want to change the subject just a little bit. I want to know about the other story that was on the news last night and in the paper this morning, about officers from Rampart roughing up INS agents after they identified themselves as INS agents. And those agents are now suing the city. And one, I understand, had a dislocated rotator cuff and told the officers that, and asked not to be cuffed in a way that he had to pull his arm behind his back. But they proceeded to do that in a pretty vicious manner, anyway. So I would ask that you brief the council at this moment about that situation, because it is equally disturbing.
Basically, what I can tell you is that that investigation started the night of that incident, that we have -- was slightly delayed by the fact that the INS investigators did not make themselves available for interview early on. But what we have seen so far from the independent witnesses at the scene, also from tape recordings that the officer, LAPD officer, made of the contact, and that was late in the contact with them, that we're pulling all that investigation together, and we'll be able to come to some conclusions very shortly. But we've interviewed the people that were present. We've interviewed the INS people. We've interviewed our people. And we've looked at the -- or at least evaluated the physical evidence of the tape that was present. And as soon as we pull all that together, we can tell you what conclusions we'll come to. But we've been on that case ever since that complaint was made.
A second question. What about the reported involvement of crash at 77th Division in this particular Rampart issue? And are you looking at other stations for the operation of their crash services?
In fact--
It's a misnomer to call them crash services.
Well, we call them crash units at this time, but soon that will probably change. But tomorrow, our intent is to give every member of council a copy of the Board of Inquiry report, and then you could read for yourself. It's the extent of that investigation. And we've looked at every one of our specialized units, crash, narcotics, and every one of those, to look at the quality of work and make some assessment as to the issues that are relevant in the Board of Inquiry. And I think when you see that report, you'll see the extensiveness of that evaluation. And so, again, as we said at the last briefing, is that we have seen issues as far as quality of work that have deteriorated throughout the department. At this time in our criminal investigation, we do not have information that criminal activity is occurring in another crash unit in the city. But as I've said before, the last four months of our investigation has been interviewing Perez entirely, to get every statement he has. Now the transition is to go out and begin to investigate the allegations he's made regarding other people. And that will then give us the information that everybody's asking for, what's the extent and breadth and depth of this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhrer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we have all said that public confidence in the justice system has been profoundly shaken. But as I've been observing the Rampart scandal unfold, so has my confidence been shaken to its core. And I think we need to address the legitimacy of those issues. Perception issues in this case, I think, shouldn't be trivialized. They are at the heart of what it means to have a well-functioning democracy. We're all struggling, as Councilmember Padilla just indicated, to find ways to restore it. Question again is, how? Now, I want to say there are two efforts underway, and they have been melded today, and I think they need to be distinguished from each other. The Board of Inquiry process is almost concluded and is different from the criminal process. And I stand by my view that we shouldn't strangle the Prop F process before it's been allowed to work with regard to the Board of Inquiry. I think it's the right thing to let that process unfold and give the Inspector General and the Commission the resources they need to make it work. Let's distinguish that from the criminal investigations here. I think we don't know, as Chief Parks has said, we don't know the truth of the allegations that have been raised in the newspaper today. But we do know that the role of the FBI, its capacity to be objective, independent, and have its results thought of well, has been called into question in the most serious ways. Chief Parks is concerned, I think legitimately, about control of the investigation, and we've mentioned that a few times today. And I think it's a concern that's worthy of note. But I don't think it's the only concern, nor candidly do I think that it's the most important concern. The most important concerns are twofold. How do we most effectively get to the bottom of the scandal, get all the facts on the table, prosecute those who need to be prosecuted? And secondly, how do we assure the public that that's been done? Those are, I think, the most important issues. Councilmember Pacheco asked, "Is the inclusion of the term 'local' in the motion the best thing?" Well, we can debate that issue. I think it's an interesting question to debate, but it's not at the core of the question. And with regard to the issue of whether or not mere policies have been breached, or whether there's criminal misconduct, I understand the distinction that our colleague has attempted to draw. But I have to say, I don't -- I'm not at all sanguine that whatever has occurred constitutes mere violations of policy. And in fact, given the seemingly daily unfolding of a new revelation related to Rampart, how can any of us be confident that it's mere breaches of policy, if anything, that are at stake? And that's the point of marshaling the resources at the highest level possible to work with the police department on a criminal investigation. That's the point of this motion, is to assure that that's true. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chik.
I'm trying to negotiate without talking so that I can have the ability to move the previous question, but I think Mr. Wax is signaling me that he'd prefer that I not do that. And therefore, I will use a small amount of this time. I think that there are very sincere desires on the part of all of us to address the very real problems that are facing us, that are facing the community, to come up with solutions, to have others come up with solutions that we can rely on. And so I think it's with good intentions that we're searching for what is the right way to do that. But I'm going to reiterate that if we're looking for the most objective outside purview, which was what Charter Amendment F and the public thought they were creating in the current form of the commission, then I feel that Councilman Wax's motion, which is still alive, which was sent to committee, is what we need to do as the immediate first step. And that, in a very quick way, without convening special task force, we can get the information that we need to make the right decisions, to see where we need to weigh in in bringing the right resources, by voting to send a letter today to our U.S. Attorney, our Department of Justice representative, asking for a full briefing, an education that can be relied on rather than reading it in the newspaper, and have that information, along with what Chief Parks has told us, in order to decide whether the council needs to or should be calling, as this motion does, for the creation of a group of experts from different government entities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chik. The Chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
I wanted to speak to Chief Parks and make this a public comment, because I don't want anyone to confuse my position in any way. Councilmember Hernandez is very right about this. We do not and do not expect the police department to be turned into an INS center or anywhere where our citizens are residents, because we're really talking about undocumented residents who need to step forward to report crimes or be witnesses. We do not want that to be a problem or an issue. So I expect you to fully prosecute -- not prosecute, not prosecute. So I expect you to fully prosecute, not prosecute because it's the wrong word, to fully bring Board of Rights actions against all police officers who violate Special Order 40. My only point to my colleagues, and so, well, first of all, Chief, do you understand at least my position on that?
Yes, I think the issue is that when we finish the investigation, if we find someone that has violated the order and we evaluate the significance of that violation, then we take into consideration the discipline.
Right.
And so certainly, that's the mission of the investigation, is determine that firsthand before we make judgments as to the discipline, which is on the tail end of the system.
Okay. Because I believe that we all agree, at least in the Fourteenth Council District, we all agree that we do not want two different treatments for our residents. What I do also want to make clear, though, as a distinction, and this is the issue we really are grappling with and we're not talking about, is when we talk about individuals who have conducted criminal activity versus law-abiding citizens, what expectations do we have for those criminals? And what expectations do they have in terms of what the Police Department and the Federal Bureau of Investigation and the INS should be performing in terms of their functions? That's a debate that we're going to need to have at some point in terms of as a citywide policy. Because Special Order 40, as far as my understanding of it, wasn't dealing with undocumented individuals who are committing crimes. What it was, was, and if I remember correctly, it was right during the sanctuary movement in the Central American immigration population, and the fear, the fact that there was some coordination with not only the Salvadoran government and the INS to recruit or retrieve some individuals who were here out of political asylum and issues in terms of their immigration status and how the police should not be basically a co-conspirator with the Salvadoran government who's using the INS and all this other stuff. So I definitely support Special Order 40, but I just want to make sure that we don't get confused with that issue and how immigrants should be treated and what we're dealing with in terms of the Rampart scandal and the importance. And I agree with Councilmember Goldberg, and I agree with the Police Protective League, that the State Attorney General should review the Board of Inquiry report, and we should have those reviews from outside agencies. And if some problem surfaces, not only from those reviews, but also, I expect all of us here as a council to review that report and point out any deficiencies that we may or may not find. So I just wanted to put that clearly on the record, that I agree with Councilmember Hernandez about protecting our immigrant community.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I just have to clarify one point. I was going to play back the tape. Chief, Mr. Holden was asking a question. I want to make sure I had the answer right. I think he asked the question, and setting aside for a moment the incident Ms. Walters referred to of the two INS agents who are now suing the city for the treatment, I thought Mr. Holden asked the question of whether the Board of Inquiry report had the information about the INS and the FBI and all that was revealed in the paper today in the report, that you said it didn't have that.
No, it does not.
Okay. See, this is the issue. How many people have been conducting the Board of Inquiry? Over 100 officers?
We've had over 300 officers, but I think we've given the council the list of subjects that they evaluated.
No, but see, here's the problem, Chief. If 300 officers have been investigating this for a year and they didn't have what was in the paper today--
But I think--
--you have the inherent flaw, what was in the paper today, even if it wasn't in those questions, is a relevant and related issue. And that's the fear. It's not what's going to be in the report, it's what's not going to be in the report.
Mr. Wax, I think if we realize, and this is, again, the merging of two processes, we said over and over that the Board of Inquiry is looking at systemic management issues. It's not dealing with misconduct--
I know, I know that.
And the issue is, is that the criminal is dealing with the criminal aspect, and IED is dealing with the administrative--
I know that. And unlike Mr. Fuhr, I kind of believe that the criminal's going along and you're going to get the bad guy, people, and you're going--
But the administrative also--
But the systemic issues, the issue that's in the paper today is a systemic issue. The issue that's in the paper today is the kind of thing that makes these things repeat themselves. And if 300 officers working for over a year don't find those things, the report, even if you don't question anything in the report, if something that's critically important is missing from it, you've got a problem. You've got a problem in finding out why it happened, you have a problem in repeating it again, and you have a problem in making people believe in it. I think this is going to be the fundamental problem, not so much what you did find, but what you didn't find. If something of this magnitude wasn't detected by all of this effort, there is a problem.
Well, let me say this. First of all, it's not been a year. The Board of Inquiry started in the latter part of last year. It's roughly been going four months. And so, again, they have evaluated and investigated the parameters that we gave them upfront. The issues of dealing with misconduct as it relates to people not following the rules, Internal Affairs will handle those issues and have been dealing with those, and the issues dealing with criminal are being dealt with the task force. So the Board of Inquiry was never intended, in dealing with these issues, to go beyond the scope of what we gave them on that precept.
But I'm not suggesting what's in the paper today is criminal. Let's assume there was no criminal, but what went in the paper today was wrong, and it's relevant to how we operate. That's the point.
But I think what the issue is, is that what's in the paper, the way we verify that is going to be through an administrative investigation or a criminal investigation. It's not going to be in the Board of Inquiry.
See, that's, I think this is, you can't make the distinctions, Mike. I mean, this whole, everything is related to everything. Getting to the bottom of it means getting to the bottom of everything, and that you can't make a neat line between this is criminal and this is not.
Thank you, Mr. Wax.
You can, you know, I just, I think this is raising up the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. That concludes any comments by council members. I see no one else wishing to speak. Mr. Clerk, we do have some items before us.
Yeah, Special 2B is a motion, Chik Hernandez, to direct a letter go out today from the Council President to the U.S. Department of Justice, asking for a full briefing before counsel by the appropriate representatives on this Friday or next Tuesday.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll? Mr. Clerk, would you repeat it for the benefit of the council members?
Special 2B, direct a letter go out today from Council President to the U.S. Department of Justice, asking for a full briefing before counsel by the appropriate representatives on this Friday or next Tuesday.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, five noes.
Okay, that fails. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Special 2A, Ms. Chik and Mr. Burnson both move the motion to send this Special 2 motion to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Would you open the roll?
To send to the committee?
Yes. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
That passes. Next item.
Now is time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Leonard Shapiro, followed by Richard Robinson, followed by Brian Hutchings. Mr. Shapiro?
Mr. President, after that long discussion that you had on what to do about this Rampart situation, I don't know if it's in order for me to say what I was going to say. I wanted to reiterate support of Joel Wax's motion, that we need a second Christopher Commission, and we need it now. And there's no use dilly-dallying about the fact that we have to restore public confidence as quickly as possible. We have to get to the bottom of what happened because the credibility of the entire judicial system is at stake. And while it's in order to wait for the Board of Inquiry's report, it's also in order for everybody to understand on the City Council that the attitude that the City Council and the people take is not just the attitude of the Police Department and the problems that they have, but we have to take a look at why this happened and make sure that it doesn't happen again. We know that it's happened throughout the history of the LAPD. We know that there's been lots of things that have happened that we looked the other way. We know what happened in Hollywood with the burglary situation. We know what happened with the bookies in the Seventy-seventh. We know what happened in former mayors 50 and 60 years ago, and we know that it can't happen. We know this is the worst. Jurys will take the Rampart perjuries, frame-ups, and shootings into consideration in future use and in present use. Right now, jurys that are being sworn in and that are handling cases are taking whatever's happening in Ramparts, what's happening in the City Council, what's happening with the reports into consideration right now. It isn't that they're going to wait and to wait for this report and that report to come out, but, and it's all right for us to wait and find out what the police have to say to themselves, but we have to understand one basic premise, and that's the premise that no organization can investigate itself properly. There's too many hidden ties, there's too many conflicts of interest. Even though you say there are none, there are. We need a second Christopher Commission. Maybe somebody can prevail upon Warren Christopher to come back again. You did a good job the first time, do it a second time. But if you can't get Mr. Christopher, then get somebody else of his caliber, of his credibility. That's what's needed, and we cannot wait any longer and say, we're waiting for this and waiting for that. Do everything you can. Make sure that the DA does his work, make sure that the chief does his work, but understand the responsibility for what's happening rests right squarely on the shoulders of the City Council and the mayor of this city, and that it's up to us to see that the people understand our system works. Mr. President.
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. President, members of council, the Federal Bureau of Investigation pressured the Immigration and Naturalization Service into investigating the Los Angeles Police Department because the County Board of Supervisors District Attorney seems to believe that the cowboy mentality in some of the Los Angeles Police Department is a minor problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchings?
Morning, afternoon. Charter reform, I want to, this is going to sound like a conspiracy theory perhaps, but it's actually just one person's view from investigation, starting with charter reform and working through LUSD. And now we have the convention coming up. Now, the precedent for charter reform was actually a thing called Big Mac in New York City in '75 because the Rand, excuse me, the Wond Corporation, this was done at the behest of the Wond Corporation, and it became inculcated into the city government and also Felix Rojaten. The LUSD seems to have been used as a kind of a workshop in experimental government by the mayor and the people around the mayor and like the people around charter reform, like Michael Milken, who also has a kind of a little empire in educational, in private education and software. Why I am most interested in LUSD is there's an interconnection between LUSD and the Democratic Convention coming up, which is Mr. Eli Broad. I'm hoping that Mr. Broad can be a kind of a bridge or a white knight or something to keep an eye on things. Because Mr. Broad was appointed to the Search Committee for the Superintendent of LUSD, and this was done according to the New Times. There was originally supposed to be a nine-member board, and when Mr. Broad didn't make the cut, they had to expand the board to 11. And I don't know who the 11th wheel is, so to say. Now, Mr. Broad is also on the host committee. Now, the weird thing about the host committee, I mean about the convention being in August, is that somehow the proponents of charter reform managed to get, although they said initially that it wasn't going to be until 2001, they managed to get part of charter reform implemented in force by the 1st of July before the convention.
Mr. Hutchings, if you could conclude, please.
The conclusion is, what is the conspiracy? Is it just heavy breathing? And why is CNN forcing the Times to cut out a full third of the Democratic slate? There's Lyndon LaWish is on the ballot, and he's being kept off based solely on hearsay, innuendo, and lies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public comment. Mr. Clerk, any other business?
Motion's for posting a referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember requests to be excused from council. Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused on March 1st to leave early. Motion is required.
Move it.
Okay, Mr. Burnson moves. Ms. Chik seconds. Without objection, that'll be the order.
Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused on March 29th for city business. This meets policy.
Okay. Without objection, that'll be the order.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused on February 29th. This requires a motion.
Mr. Burnson moves. Ms. Goldberg seconds. Without objection, that'll be the order.
And Mr. Wax requests to be excused on March 15th to leave at 11:30. This meets policy for personal business.
Without objection, that will be the order.
It's early lunch, right, Joel?
The desk is clear.
Okay, are there any adjourning motions? Okay. The Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson for an adjourning motion.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, this is for Council President Ferraro, but I'd also like to be a co-author. Bill Welsh--
Yes.
--passed away yesterday.
All members?
I'd like to be a co-presenter on that, please.
Yes, because he, but he also lived in my district for a short period of time also and was on one of my Citizens Advisory Committees in Chatsworth, by the way. Bill was a pioneering KTTV broadcaster and a longtime president of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, who was often introduced simply as Mr. Hollywood. He was considered a founding father of local television and of the $922 million Hollywood redevelopment effort now underway to rescue the crucibles of movie-making from decades of decay. And by the way, John Ferraro told me that when he was playing football for NSC, Bill Walsh was broadcasting the games. So Bill was often down at council on any issue that involved not just Hollywood, but particularly Hollywood. He was a strong voice in our city, and he'll be missed. I would also ask that we adjourn in memory of Ken Maddy, who was the-- We already did that, okay. I'd like to be a co-presenter on the Ken Maddy one if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chik for an adjourning motion.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. Sherry Klein, who was the wife of Danny Klein, often known in the neighborhood as the Bakery Man. He, for many years, has run the pastry shop in the Gelson's Market on Reseda Boulevard. She passed away this Thursday very suddenly and unexpectedly at the age of 70. And I would like to just read a very brief part of the service that was held this Sunday, which was standing room only filled with friends and family and people whose lives she had touched. She was the beloved wife of Danny, mother of Joyce, Robert, Roger, and Richard, adopted mother of Andy, mother-in-law Victoria, grandmother of Bradley and Gwen, great-grandmother of Caleb and Ethan. She died following complications of knee replacement surgery, which she had undertaken in an effort to maintain her active lifestyle. During her 53 years of marriage to Danny, she sometimes felt that being the baker's wife was her only claim to fame. However, she was a hard worker, a caring community activist, who had many of her own interests, such as active involvement in Na'amat USA and the Sasha Brastoff Foundation. She had a great zest for life that made her seem much younger than her 70 years, a kind, generous, and loyal nature, and she was also known as a terrific joke teller. She will leave many people who will miss her beautiful smile, her sparkling eyes, and her good sense of humor.
Thank you, Mrs. Chik. Are there others?
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg for an adjourning motion.
Yes, first, let me just say on Bill Welsh, that he was active up until just very recently. I saw him at the Chamber luncheon in February. So he really remained involved. He was, for some of those of you who don't remember and who grew up in LA, Bill Welsh was the person who did the first live broadcast of the Rose Parade. I think that's one of the things that a lot of people remember him for. He was certainly a booster of Hollywood. He was the chamber's president for 10 years, from 1980 to 1990. He was the last person to have that kind of decade run. And I know that, I will tell you, that there was never a man who had more spirit or concern about all of Hollywood, not just the tourist area, but how people lived and how people worked, and I personally will miss him as well. In addition, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we close in memory of Carl Winford Thomas, who's the father of my staff member, Vaughn Thomas. Carl Thomas was in the United States Army and honorably discharged in 1946. He was married to Violet Mae Aldridge in 1945 and resided in Los Angeles. They had two children, Carl and Vaughn. He was employed by the United States Postal Service from 1946 to 1970 as a male clerk in-- and letter carrier. He and his wife owned a ceramic company called VICA, or ViCA. They also showed pedigree domino pinchers. He helped form the American Veterans Committee to Fight for Fair Employment Practices, was a Wee-Below advisor for the Boy Scouts, as well as being a team and all-star manager for West Altadena Little League, for which he became president of the organization. He enjoyed traveling, building electric hi-fi components, and was an avid album collector of both Duke Ellington and Count Basie. He is survived by two sons, Carl and Vaughn, two brothers, Dwight and James, two sister-in-laws, Charlotte and Winstona Aldridge. Secondly, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Roger Segura. Roger was a union leader at UTLA, a union leader at the Musicians Union Local 47, a composer, arranger, a teacher, a negotiator, and the consummate teacher advocate. He was a leader in racially integrating the Musicians Union. He and Buddy Collette played pivotal roles in that together. He was subsequently a leading force in merging the warring two local teachers' unions, the affiliates of AFT and NEA, to create a powerful merged NEA-AFT local now known as UTLA. In his early years, he was a pianist and an arranger for some of the big bands in the '30s and '40s. He came to Hollywood and began to work avidly for the integration of the Musicians Local 47. There were at that time two Musicians Locals. He became a teacher and began working at Birmingham High School, which he quickly became active in AFT Local 1021, and became the local's executive director. And then for 30 years after retirement for teaching, Roger served as UTLA's Director of Grievance Processing and advisor to the union presidents. I had a chance to work with Roger. I was a grievance chair of a much smaller local in Compton, but he was the man who taught me how to prepare for grievance hearings and how to help protect teachers' rights when they were unjustly accused, and I will miss him greatly.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have any others?
Yes, I would like to be a seconder on Roger Segura, please. Absolutely.
I do have one. I would like to ask of the council, adjourn in memory of William F. Navarro, who passed away on February 18th, survived by his wife Julia, sons Mario, Vincent, Andrew, Anthony, and William, our daughter Maria, and 18 grandchildren. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you. Being no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. Have a good day, everyone.